Thank you, it's April 7, 2011. And Jim Love is here. You're the only one of the candidates out of the six who are running in the March 22 election that we weren't able to interview. And now you've made the runoff against Jill Dane. So we will ask you, at least the first question we'll ask you will be the same questions that we ask every other person in this race, including Ms. Dane. And as with her interview, we're going to video record it and then post it through our website. So the first one of those questions, and I'll start off, and then we'll go through the panel here. What do you consider to be the core functions of local government?
Well, public health and safety is number one. You've got to have security, otherwise it's a panarchy. And obviously, you know, streets and drainage, you know, streets and highways is very important. And parks and recreation is also very important for the folks. A lot of people like parks and such. And quality of life issues, you know, the general issues that go along with that. We need a high quality of life in Jacksonville. But certainly, the top three are public safety, streets and highways, and drainage and such, and parks and recreation.
All right. Mr. Rill, help if you want to.
All right, very good. What specific savings do you believe can be found in upcoming budgets? Please be specific regarding areas and programs. And here's a few that we've come to our mind. Jacksonville Journey, Jacksonville Economic Development Commission, Cultural Council, Special Events, Public Safety, or any others that you could think of.
Okay. Well, if you look at the budget, you know, most of it is spent on labor. So obviously, the labor costs are the biggest areas that you can save in. I talked to Jerry Holland about saving money, and I guess about several years ago, he was asked to, you know, cut 2% out of his labor cost. And he said, hey, listen, if I can find other costs to save, would you accept that instead? And so what he did is he not only cut 2%, I believe his story is he cut like 4% or 6% and didn't have to lay off anybody. So I'm thinking that each of the department heads in each of the areas probably know ways to save money. And I would ask them first, let's, you know, let's cut the budget by 5%. Can you do it? Let them do it. They're the experts in their field. They should know what they can cut and what they can't cut. For me to go into Jerry Holland's office and say, you need to, you know, cut two, three people, or whatever the case may be, I think is presumptive on my part. But he knows the ways to save money. I think the tax collector's office can save money. Police and Fire, if you give John Rutherford a chance, he can tell us ways to save money. And then, you know, the community service officers is a big savings in the police department that he came up with. There's a little, also, you could privatize some things, particularly, you know, the mowing, the mowing and such. The medians at Park and King, on King Street, for instance, they're done by us, us, the Park and King Area Association. We do it for free. We actually pay for it. So we would ask the citizens to come up with some of their own volunteer work to help with some of the costs that we normally have. But we could privatize the lawn maintenance in certain areas. In other words, you could have a fellow who's mowing the lawn across the street from the median that's done by the city. You could ask him to do it, and you could say, hey, listen, we'll put a sign in there that would advertise your name and your phone number. And that would do two things. He gets free advertisement. If anything goes wrong with it, his phone number's there and you can call. And you can do that. Like I said, we do ours for free. And if you go down to King Street right now, it's really good. But there's some of those.
Well, I don't think I was clear then. Are there any programs that the taxpayers are paying for? Let's say that they couldn't find any savings for cutting, mowing the yards or whatever.
Right.
Are there any programs that the city's currently paying for that you don't think should be taxpayer-funded?
Well, you talked about the Jacksonville Journey. And actually, that's one area I believe that saves money in the long run. Because what you end up with with folks is that the recidivism is much less. So you have less people in jail. And I think it's worth it to do that in the long run. It's like investing. You want to change oil on your car, even though you can save money by not changing your oil, but in the long run, it saves you money because your car lasts longer. I believe the Jacksonville Journey is a good thing.
What about Cultural Council?
The Cultural Council. Certainly, I'd like to see the citizens step up more and provide more of the funds on that. I do look at the arts as a business. It brings, it provides jobs, it is a business, as well as brings the arts to Jacksonville. I'd like to find other ways to fund that other than through the city. I do like the arts, I think it's important. But it's not top of the city's list, as I mentioned earlier.
All right, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was going the other way. What do you believe is the solution to the city employee pension problem? That's what everyone's lips has on it. What steps would you take as a council member, knowing full wealth and negotiations happen elsewhere? But as a council member, what can you do to work toward a solution of that problem?
Sure. It's a tough problem, and it involves collective bargaining. And that's a difficult thing to navigate. But what the rest of the country is doing, in the civilian world, in my world, as an insurance agent, we went from a defined benefit to a defined contribution. And that sets the limits on how much, you know, my company has to pay me in the future. They know exactly what their numbers are. And so they can afford that. The rest of the country is going, I think, about 85% of all of the employees now are under defined contribution, not defined benefit. So there are some disadvantages to going, at least with the police, with the defined contribution. They do get some state funds if they do a defined benefit, which is what they have now. I believe it's about 3%. Also, they would have to go into Social Security, which currently, the police and fire are not, and the city employees, are not under Social Security, which actually saves the cities some money. They don't have to match the 7.65 and 7.65 matching. Actually, it's changed recently. But that saves the city money. So I believe that the city should, the city employees, not necessarily the public safety employees, should definitely go on a defined contribution system at some point in time. I believe that the police and fire ought to have some sort of formula where I believe that a defined benefit is acceptable for them. Except they need to change when and how much they get. Make it a little longer down the road. Instead of just 20 years, maybe 25 years, and you have to be a certain age to get it. I'm a Navy reservist. I retired in 2003. I had 26 years in the Navy Reserve, retired as a captain. Now, I don't get my Navy retirement until I'm 60. Maybe something similar to that, I'm not saying 60, but a lower number instead of police officers retiring at the age of 40 would make it still work. But maybe move that number down the line, and that would save the city a lot of money.
Okay, Conrad.
Are there any fees that have been put in place by the current government that you would attempt to reduce or remove? And how would you cover any revenue shortfall would result?
Well, certainly, the garbage fees is one fee that needs to be reduced. They said they were going to raise it gradually, and they didn't do that. They felt, and that's not right. I've knocked on a lot of doors, and a lot of people that are unemployed, that can't be employed, maybe they're handicapped, are on Social Security, they have a fixed income. And it's really sad when they raise these fees, because they have no place else to get extra money. They can't earn extra money. And it hurts them. So that definitely needs to be reduced. I can see paying for garbage, because that's a service we provide. But to double it is crazy. The stormwater fee, I believe, is not properly applied. I think a lot of folks pay way too much in stormwater fees when they're not even using the stormwater runoff system. So I believe that it needs to be redone and properly applied to people that really use the system, and probably should be reduced also.
Can I ask, if, so if you reduce those fees and the revenue goes down at the city, how would you make up that revenue? You can't just, you know, if they're collecting 60 million, now you're collecting 30 million. Where are you going to get 30 million from?
Well, we've talked about that earlier. You have to get it from other areas, obviously. We talked about, you know, reducing the payroll and going to each of the departments and asking them to reduce. So you'd have to reduce it from other areas, obviously. You couldn't do it from, you know, the taxes.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, Dan.
What is your general view on the granting of sole source contract for goods and services needed by the city?
Well, obviously, as a businessman, I think that's foolish. When I'm ready to buy a new copy machine or new computer, I go online and I, you know, shop it in about, you know, four or five different areas. You know, CNET.com, you know, Amazon.com. And I'm shopping it to make sure I know exactly what the best price is. Also, I look at the service, you know, are they a good company? But definitely, sole service contracts or sole provider contracts are ridiculous. And we should have a number of folks, and I think Mike Hogan has brought this up, that he thinks it's a great way to save money. He brought up the picnic table one. He invited Costco for $1.50, and he had to buy it through, you know, the provider for $600, which is crazy, absolutely crazy.
Is there a dollar figure above which the contract would always be subject to the request for proposal system?
I think you need to give more economy to the people running each of their department. And I think there shouldn't be. I think we should be able to buy it where we want to buy it, as long as we do it in a smart way and shop it. Certainly, we should have a list of good vendors, and that's what State Farm does. We have a list of good automobile vendors that you can use to fix your car. But you can use anybody you want, but we know the good ones. So we suggest those, and then you can use others if you need to.
Let me shift gears slightly. One of the things we're interested in, of course, is transparency and open government.
Sure.
And we would like to know what you would do if you were elected to encourage transparency, public access to the government, and public participation in the legislative process.
Sure. Well, I think that's one big advantage I have over my competitor, is the fact that I already have an office here in Tampa, right down the street on College and King. I'll be there nine to five most of the time. People can walk in my office and talk to me whenever I don't have somebody else, we'd be glad to talk with them. My cellphone is published right now. People can call me on my cellphone. I'm fortunate to have five staff members in my office. So if somebody calls, I am, and I am out doing an interview or whatever. You know, they can take a message. And that's nine to five all the time. They don't have to go downtown to see me. My email is published, so they can contact me via email. So I think that communication my way is going to be open, and people can access me very easily. And I'll answer all the emails that I get, and answer them in a forthright manner.
Hey, Victor.
What distinguishes you from your opponents specifically, and makes you, and not them, the right choice for the taxpayer?
Well, number one, Navy. Our biggest employer, District 14 and the county, is United States Navy. And I'm a Navy captain. I worked not only at Cecil Field as a Navy pilot who jets off the carrier, but also I worked as a reservist at NES Jacksons and Cecil Field and MACORD. So I know all the bases. I understand, I'm a member of the ANA, American Association of Naval Aviation. I understand that when we have to go get a carrier, I can talk carrier. When we want to keep the NADAP beer, it's got a different name now, they've changed it about three times, but that's our biggest manufacturer in Jacksonville, is at NES Jacksons. And that's employment. I am all for employment. Number two, I've already proven that I can do work in Jacksonville. I'm the current president of the Park and King Area Association. And we started it about 15 years ago. Riverside was not doing very well. And we got together, I was the first vice president, the second president, I've been the president for the last three years, and we've got a lot done. 2005, we made a huge difference in Riverside. Right now, if you go downtown, or if you go to Riverside on King Street at 8 o'clock tonight, you'll hardly find a parking place because it's so vibrant. 15 years ago, it would have been vacant, it would have been ghost town. Because of the work that we did, the projects that we did, the new greening, the new sidewalks, the new streetlights, we did a lot of work. We made a difference. We did the planning, and it made a huge difference in our area. Number three is I've been the past president of the Jacksonville Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Council. So I'm a businessman. I've been a businessman for 27 years. I was selected twice as a Small Business Leader of the Year from the Downtown Council. Unemployment is our toughest problem right now. If we can solve that, that will go a long way to making Jacksonville a better place. And as a small business owner, I know what it takes to start small businesses, and I believe that's the area that we can attack right away to help with the unemployment and make Jacksonville a better place to work and play.
All right. All right, okay. Assuming that the CDC was to officially endorse you, what actions, if any, would you take to inform the electorate and inform the public of that fact?
Well, we've got brochures, and we're going to redo them for the next round. So it would be included on those brochures, along with the other endorsements that I have. So that would be the main way that I would do it. I don't know any other way. Of course, you guys advertise pretty well, so it would be, if I did get the endorsement, it would be everywhere.
Well, yeah, we try and see that. Yeah, please, go ahead.
All right. I just noticed some things in some of the questions. And we've dealt with the questions that we've standardized on. And just some things came to light. You talked about partnering with businesses and getting things like lawn mowing and so forth, partnering with businesses. And talking about your experience with civic organizations. As a city council member, what about an outreach where drawing the civic organizations? I know in some of the other areas, the medians are maintained by the garden club. We want to spend $600,000 to decorate the courthouse property. How do you see that we can draw the citizens and the citizen organizations into these costs that we're paying public works highly for?
I know. My wife is a member of the garden circle, the garden circle. And we actually did work, they've done it for a couple of different, they did it for the Rap House, for instance. And I think, and that's just one garden circle. There's probably 20 garden circles that would probably love to help. The city would probably have to maybe buy the plants, but they would be happy to put them in. And I think there's a lot of groups that would do that. I think that's where we're missing the boat, is not using all the community groups like Rap, like the garden circles, to help with these costly things that could be reduced dramatically. I mean, we saved the city a lot of money by, you know, cleaning up those medians and not charging them at all. We could do that some more. Those are good ideas, and we should do that.
Another thing is organizations in government are renting or building facilities to do something when those facilities already exist. Have you any experience in utilizing or repurposing buildings, organizations, departments? We're talking about merging functions of divisions together. What's your insight on that? You have human relations over here, human relations over there. What's your perspective of the merger and consolidation?
Well, I see what you're saying. In other words, have HR departments, have one HR department instead of all of those, one in each.
And that's one that everyone's talking about. What's your perspective along that line?
Well, certainly, you know, in my office, I'm everything. I'm the payroll master, I'm the HR, I'm the safety director, I'm everything. I think that it's probably not a bad idea. You would have, I think you could have a more professional HR person if they worked for the entire city instead of just, you know, the tax collector's office. I think that's something that certainly can be looked at, and it could save a lot of money.
Those are things that you opened up on.
I just, I have one, or maybe two. You mentioned police and fire going to defined, not, you would keep them on a defined benefit, but possibly look at rolling the age back, because currently, they could retire at any age. What age did you have them on?
Well, like I said, with the Navy Reserve at 60 for me, I'm thinking closer to, because their jobs can be difficult, I was thinking more like 50. Or maybe a, there's another formula you could use, like the combination of number of years that you've worked, plus your age, and if it equals 85, then you can retire. There's a couple of different formulas, and we'd have to look at it. I'm not an actuary, and I don't know what would be the best. But we'd want to look at what would work.
And with the police, you would not propose rolling the age, making a minimum retirement age?
Oh, sure, for both, yeah.
For both, okay.
Oh, yeah. It'd be the same for both.
And this is a comment. I've heard in Tallahassee that one of the reasons that the police sheriffs have been lobbying Tallahassee to keep the system the way it is now is that the benefit of having defined contribution is that it would be portable. And that portability would make it more difficult for local sheriffs to keep seasoned officers, because they would be able to move. And that was one of the primary reasons sheriffs are opposed to defined benefit, I mean, defined, yeah, defined benefit versus defined contribution. They don't want to see it switched.
Right.
Because, you know, it's like a 401K. A 401K, it's portable where it's not as portable under the current system.
Right. And that's one advantage of keeping good people. And that's why I'm in favor of defined benefit, but just moving the years down the road. Because it would keep the good policemen here. And I had, I was working this morning, painting the graffiti with two policemen, they were there with me. I think we have a great police force, and we need to take care of them. But right now, the price tag is too high. We need to adjust the price tag. And we can do that by moving the years out. A 401K, I kind of like, I personally like 401K because it is portable, and you can put more money into it if you wish. And we could even look at a combination of both. Some businesses have both, maybe a small defined benefit with a 401K tax. I mean, you could do that also. But I'm personally for the police and fire. I would, defined benefits, I think, to keep them here.
Okay. Wouldn't the best place to make that change would be, in fact, with city council? Why in the world couldn't, in your opinion, the day after you go in, introduce a bill where the city council doesn't get a defined benefit?
Right.
And if you don't get it after six years of being on city council?
You know, when I first started running for this, I was flabbergasted to find out that that was the case. I couldn't believe it. Compared to what I have now, in my business, I have to make my own retirement. I don't have a retirement unless I put money aside, and I have a simpler plan in my business. I think it's crazy. Personally, I think I would like a 401K, because that way it allows me to put money aside, you know, a small match, maybe a very small match, like 3%. And then if I wanted to put 10% or 20%, I could, but it would be my money and not the city's money. So definitely, I was extremely surprised that after six years, you get a defined benefit. That's crazy, absolutely, almost ludicrous. I believe that comes from the state of Florida. And that's where it has to be changed. I don't know if it would be changed in the city council spot.
We brag of having such a communication link to the state, that communication would have to start in the city council.
It probably would. And I would be all for that. I think it's crazy that we get a retirement after six years.
Okay. Conrad, you have a question?
Yeah. Following up on this thing of encouraging transparency and public access to government, there's been discussion, I had a question that I've been trying to formulate to the first round that we did, of an aggrieved citizen can be very intimidated by the monolith of City Hall, especially coming down there as a neophyte. And there's a problem with this layered bureaucracy, and since being entrenched like it is, you can really hit a brick wall. You've got an unpopular problem with city government. The consensus that we've gotten out of, in the first round, when I tried to figure out how to qualify this question, the immediate corner that council candidates go to is, that's what your council person is for.
Right.
Well, many times, as soon as they find out it's an unpopular issue, you can't even get a call back.
Right.
You can get no response. And here's the citizen, there is no ombudsman, there is nothing, they claim there's all sorts of inroads, like 630C, which is a good general guide to buttons to push or whatever.
Right.
But I have thought about something being provided for the person, taxpayer, who especially when the first approach, goes down there and hits that brick wall. One thing that these entrenched bureaucracies are good at is if there's something that's really unpopular, is they'll hit you with dealing with the general council's office. The general council's office is unresponsive to the citizen. They just flatly slam the door in your face.
Well, first of all, if you have a problem, or you know, want something done, you go to your city councilman, and you're saying, many times, there's a brick wall. They don't answer, or whatever. But you've got actually five at-large city councilmen you can go to. So, you know, maybe we ought to do some training of the voters, that there's actually, you actually have six city councilmen. And now, I don't know how responsive they are, but I know that I've talked to Kevin Ives, our at-large, he doesn't get as many calls as this month before we got, not anywhere near. And so I think maybe they would be more responsive. But actually, you've got the other, the four others at large. So if now you hit the brick wall there, now it's a problem. Maybe you need some help from other people to help you talk to these people. And I guess it depends on the issue, too, but you have six city councilmen to help you out. And if you go through all six of those, and you don't get any satisfaction, maybe you do have a bad subject. I don't know. But certainly, you can always talk to me about it, and discuss the problem. My door's open, Monday through Friday, you know, 9 to 5. I'm talking to you.
Dan.
What is your take on the JDC? Should they be giving more money, less?
Jacksonville Economic Development, and Ron, it's Ron Klassen, he's in charge of it. And I think certainly, economic development's important. We have to be very careful about how we dispense the money. We could probably do it with less money. I think the best way to entice businesses, you have to weigh the plus and the minus. In other words, if you give them not money, but let's say a deferral of taxes, let's say it's taxes we wouldn't have gotten anyway, because they're moving into a building that's empty. We defer it for a couple of years, and then we start charging them. I wouldn't see a problem with that. And Ron Barton is the head of JDC. And we need, I think we need somebody that would do that. I don't like the willingly giving away of money to get people to come. I'd rather see a deferral of something that we wouldn't have gotten anyway, a deferral of taxes, and some other things like that, that would allow them to come, to entice them. Because if we don't entice them, other places will, just like the Mercedes plant went up through Tuscaloosa, not here. They offered them more money. But we could, I think, just offering them, not taxing them on money that we couldn't have gotten anyway, is a good way to do it.
One last one for me, is why would you want to become a city councilman?
Well, to make a difference. I've already made a difference in the Riverside area, and I love my community. My father wanted to make a difference in his country. He fought with Patty Boynton, war too, and Vietnam, Korea. So I also was in the military. I served my country too. And I think it's important that we serve. There's, it's a good timing for me. My kids are all in college. I want to make a difference in the city. These are tough times, and they call for some tough answers. And I'm ready to do it. I've been studying, I've been on the last four leadership trips with the Chamber of Commerce. I've been to other cities and seen what they have done. And I've got some good ideas when the money comes, for instance, the River Walk. I can tell you that there's a wonderful River Walk in Vancouver, and it goes all the way to their park. Well, ours doesn't go to the park. It stops before it gets to Metropolitan Park. We did pay for that through brick sales, brick sales that have, you know, that are engraved. And I would personally buy a brick for everybody in my family and put it on there. Corporations would buy the bricks. It's about a $7 million deal, at least it used to be, probably it's higher now, but maybe less, to finish up the River Walk. That would be a wonderful addition, and if everybody bought bricks, we could bring the price down to the next to nothing, and that would be great. And we'd become the people's walk, and not just a city building. So there's a lot of good ideas that I have that I'd like to go with, and you can't do it unless you're sitting on the sidelines.
The zoo did that 25 years ago. When they first started the facelifting at the zoo out there, my parents bought bricks.
Absolutely. At Park and King. Park and King's got them. Flushing Meadow, where they Flushing Meadow, where they played the tennis, has it. And they have big brass ones with, you know, corporate sponsors that they probably play through.
World Golf Village.
World Golf Village. There's hundreds of examples. And it wouldn't cost, we could at least reduce the cost of building the Riverwalk. I don't think we're taking advantage of what we already have in place. If we take advantage of it, we could really be a great city. I think we're a good city, but we can be a great city by just taking advantage of what we already have.
Let me ask you a couple of specific questions. The city recently has started making noises about closing Monroe Street in front of the courthouse. Do you have an opinion on that?
Oh, absolutely. I've actually walked it, went up on the parking garage and looked down, and I've talked to people. If we put Monroe Street right in front of it, it's going to cost us an extra two million dollars, which is two million dollars we don't have. It's going to be a safety issue. In other words, people coming out of the courthouse, cars going by. And it's also a terrorist issue. If you, somebody wanted to park a truck, a U-Haul truck full of bombs there, it's a bad idea to continue Monroe right in front. It's just a bad idea. And so I've got my mind made up on that, and I've talked with other people about that. That's just the wrong thing to do.
Okay. And another question, there is, recently, there's been a sort of grouping of those who consider themselves part of the power elite in favor of a renewed type of downtown development authority, particularly revolving around the shipyard side, suggesting expenditures there. What's your opinion about that?
Well, I'd like that to be in the mayor's and the city council's office. I would like us to have control, not them. And I think that would be a, another entity that we throw money into and we don't have any control over, or very little control over. I would not be for that. I do want downtown to be improved, but I think we ought to do it through the city council and the mayor's office.
So you would support a special tax, taxing district?
Well, I think they already have a downtown vision that gets some, they pay an extra tax now.
Yeah, it's already in place.
It's already in place. But, you know, if they want to do it, and they want to tax themselves more, and they vote to do it, that's fine. But if they don't want to do it, then I'm not for it. You know, they're already doing it to themselves, and they can use the money as they wish, because it's actually their money.
All right. I don't have any further questions. Does anybody else have anything?
I'm done.
If you would care to take a minute or so, just to make a statement?
Sure.
We'll be happy to let you do that.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to say that I really care about my community, and as a business leader, as a community leader, and as a military leader, I was a Navy captain. I was in charge of a hundred men over at the NES Jacksonville. In fact, we won an award for being the top Navy unit there back in about two thousand and two. I retired in two thousand and three, and I think I'm ready to do this. I've worked hard. People that know me know that I'm a hard worker. This morning at eight o'clock, I was, I was working with Rapp and the police department to help clean off graffiti. And we're working hard to, you know, make a difference. I want to make a difference. And if people understand that, and know the things that I've already done, then they'll see that I believe that I've decided I'm the best person for the job.